I'd like to ask everyone to silence electronic devices right now, phones. If you've got a laptop you're working on, please make sure it's on silent. Heather, would you please call the roll?
Ali Taichi.
Here.
Garrett O'Brien.
Here.
Tom Grinstad. Lisa Anderson. Jeff Brin.
Okay. So we have one set of minutes to approve, September 1st, and Heather sent those out, and I'm assuming everyone's reviewed them, so unless there's a comment, we can just do a head nod of approval. Okay, so September 1st minutes are approved. We're going to start the meeting with a public comment period. There's a few people in the audience. This is an opportunity to come to the podium and speak about a topic that's not on tonight's agenda. There's two items on tonight's agenda. One is a discussion of low-impact development mechanisms, something I would say it, and then the second is about our subdivision ordinance update. So if you're here to talk about either of those topics, we'll give you an opportunity to speak when we do those topics at that time, but for now, if you'd like to talk about anything else, come on up and you can talk for three minutes. Looks like we have somebody. Please state your name and address. Bill.
Sure.
Thanks. I know you know, but...
That's fine. For the record, Bill Guyer, 1008 16th Street, and good evening, commissioners. My topic is regulatory reform. As you have completed your efforts to forward to the city council the proposed revision to the conferency plan, several development regulations will come back to you for your review, and I just wanted to outline, I think, three principles I hope you would keep front and center as you proceed over the next 12, 18 months, whatever it takes. This comes by way of my 40 years' career in planning, certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners, and I've had the honor of building over 100 homes in Bellingham, representing clients that have built close to another 600 or 700 units in Bellingham. So there's three principles I want to lay out. You're aware that 42% of the landmass is zoned, single-family in Bellingham, and we know that the comp plan says we have an average of six units per acre overall, but that number is skewed because of the residential multiple density that's 12 to 20. So if you focus back to the single-family area, you really need to help us, the citizens and everybody, achieve the infill density we're trying to achieve, and I guess I would hope that you have these three principles in mind as you go forward. Number one, that the development regulations you adopt permit and allow for the density that's defined by the zoning to be achieved. That is, that the regulation doesn't decrease the number of units that can result, provide alternative means for that to occur. You know, if you've got a stream, you have an 80-foot setback, and you're going to decrease unit yield, find an alternative housing form that can go in or other mechanism, but ultimately make certain that the infill indeed can be achieved by the zoning the council has defined for that area. Number two, be certain that the regulations are internally and externally integrated. What I mean by that is, we know, we've seen silo review in the past, and we saw that when I was working with the city, that is individual departments, but be certain your development regulations are interlocked, interspaced, and they are operated as the city of Bellingham's total review and not a silo review. And the final thing is, provide for regulations that have an expedient review, clear decision-making authority, clear decision-making individuals with that authority, transparency to everyone, the general public, the applicant, staff, everyone, and a clear path for appeal. Those are themes, those three themes will come back to you over the next 12, 18 months, and I really hope that those are principles that you feel comfortable in adhering to because I know in the past this body has. So, thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Is there anyone else who'd like to comment during the public comment period? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close that, and we will move on to our first topic, and I'm going to turn it over to Kurt Navafeld. Want to give us an introduction?
Good evening, Planning Commission, Kurt Navafeld, Planning and Community Development Department. Tonight with me is Renee LaCroix, who is the Assistant Director of Public Works Natural Resources. We also have Brent Baldwin, who's Development Services Manager, and Jason Porter, who is now the...
Stormwater Development Manager.
Along with us, with staff, we also have members of AHBLO who we're working with tonight, Ryan and Colin. They'll be doing a large percentage of the presentation tonight. As you may know, the Federal Clean Water Act is intended to protect and restore water quality. One of the ways of doing that is through the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System Permit, also known as an NPDES permit. I know those are really big words, so hopefully we'll be able to explain that a little bit more to you tonight. Similar to developers, the city is also required to obtain an NPDES permit through the Department of Ecology. One of the conditions of our municipal permit is to ensure that our codes incorporate low-impact development, or LID, strategies, and those strategies and principles are intended to be the preferred method of treating stormwater. The city did contract with AHBLO to review our development codes and to identify any opportunities that we had to incorporate LID more into the principles, more into our codes. Overall, we found that the city's codes are already quite supportive of LID, but there are still some opportunities. Those opportunities will be brought forward in the form of code amendments, and we'll be having a public hearing on November 10th with you on those code amendments. Tonight, there's no action required upon you. If you do have any questions, we're definitely wanting to help answer those, or if you've got things that we want to look at and present in the public hearing, we definitely want you to let us know those as well. Tonight, both Ryan and Colin are going to walk you through some LID principles and also explain in more depth the NPDES permit conditions. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ryan to start things off.
Hello, I'm Ryan Givens from AHBLO. We've been working with the city for a while now to start integrating low-impact development through their codes. Let me see if we can get this going. It's always the hardest part of my job. Okay, so here's your team. We have Wayne Carlson, he's the project manager, he couldn't be here tonight. I'm a senior planner, and I also have Colin Poff here that's going to help me with the presentation. So our overview is generally, why are we here? You know, what is low-impact development strategies? How are we integrating low-impact development strategies throughout your code? And also the low-impact development principles and BMPs, or best management practices, that's required to be kind of peppered through your code, the project schedule, and some future resources. So again, it's really the 2013, 2018 Western Washington Municipal Permit that's really driving all of this. And what this permit says is that by the end of this year, that's a real kind of hard date, is that we update our local codes that follow the low-impact development principles. And basically, what they are is to reduce surface coverage, reduce native vegetation loss, and also reduce stormwater runoff, and really on all forms of development. So it's really kind of two parts. The first part would be what's called the BMPs, or best management practices. That's basically how you do this. And then there's also the principles, and that's really how we're going to update your code. So through the permit, there are some low-impact development best management practices that are going to be required unless they're deemed to be infeasible, and there are some criteria that you go through to see if, you know, they pass the test of infeasible or not. And then there's some optional choices. And then it also takes us down back to our main principles. So again, they're reduce impervious surface coverage, reduce native vegetation loss, and reduce stormwater runoff. So we're looking through your code right now and finding opportunities where we can make improvements and achieve these principles. And you've been doing a really good job, so we're really not seeing a lot of additions that we're having to kind of change to your code. A lot of the focus is going to be in your landscaping and in your parking standards. So next month, we'll be able to bring those back to you and kind of talk. Through the permitting process and more kind of the higher level, it was acknowledged that there's a little bit of a tension between what the LID principles are really trying to get to and then the Growth Management Act. So it's like when you start talking about reducing impervious or protecting open space and all that kind of stuff, you know, there is a balance that we can achieve, and your code is a lot easier to work with than we've found in some of the other codes that we've been helping out with. So I'm going to turn it over to Colin, he's really going to kind of drill down what the low-impact development is.
So I want to summarize what low-impact development is, but also specifically how it relates to the requirements under the permit. We have a definition here that I'm not going to read the whole thing, but the takeaways of this is that low-impact development is both a, it's a two-pronged strategy. It's both a stormwater and a land use management strategy. So that means it's much more than just engineered stormwater facilities such as bio-retention or these best management practices, but it's also a land use strategy that requires some more kind of finesse to integrate those three principles that Ryan was telling you about. And also in regards to the permit, there's two parts to compliance. From a stormwater perspective, you know, there's a little less wiggle room with how that's done. The city is adopting the 2012 Ecology Manual with local addendums, and that kind of satisfies that part of the requirement. On the land use side, it's more of the code amendments, titles 13, 15, 16, 18, and 20 all have areas where you can integrate land use in a way that is appropriate to kind of Bellingham's overall approach. I have a graphic here that shows an undeveloped site, so this is a predisturbant condition, and the hydrology of it is mostly infiltration. 40% infiltration, you have evaporation, you have a very low amount of surface flow. So this is kind of a hydrologic process. If you look at a developed site, you'll see 5% infiltration, you have a lot of impervious surface, and so you get a lot of surface runoff, 75% flows into the stormwater system and into water bodies. And so the goal of low-impact development really is to, in all types of development situations, to try to mimic this process as much as possible. So that's, one way to do that is small-scale distributed stormwater facilities that can kind of collect water as close to where it falls as possible. So that's kind of the simple diagram of low-impact development. Here are some kind of attractive attributes of what it can achieve. It can reduce volume thereby minimizing high flows. It can remove pollutants, it can treat stormwater. It replenishes streams and wetlands. You're going to see more small-scale facilities throughout a site, so it can reduce the size of conventional stormwater facilities you might see. It can increase open space, and oftentimes you'll see low-impact development techniques within open space areas or within what would normally just be regular landscape areas. And it can also be visually attractive. On the left, you see an image of a conventional stormwater facility, you know, maybe on the side of a subdivision, kind of out of sight, out of mind. On the right, here's an example of a value added, you know, from a low-impact development. This is something that's integrated into the site as an amenity. And then low-impact development also, you know, it's flexible, so it can kind of adapt to different areas, different densities. This is just one that is between a right-of-way and street trees. You wouldn't have a conventional stormwater facility here, but you can have these small-scale bio-retention areas. So you can see that it comes in different shapes and sizes. Going back just a little bit to integrating these three principles that Ryan told you about and the BMPs into the permit. So the goal really is to, the legal language is actually to make low-impact development the preferred and commonly used approach to site development. One thing is that it's required unless infeasible, so Ryan was telling you about, but there is an feasibility criteria. That's for the best management practices, so for bio-retention, permeable pavement. And then for the principles, you know, we review and amend local codes and standards. We're looking for places where Bellingham is already doing many of these things well and where they're already meeting permit requirements, and other areas where there are opportunities to integrate some of these things. And it also applies, it's going to apply in all development situations, so all new and redevelopment. And there are thresholds for what triggers stormwater requirements. The thresholds are fairly low, 2,000 square feet of low or of new and replaced impervious And here's a couple of, you know, this, what are you going to see as a product of this? You can see more of this. This is bio-retention on the left and permeable pavement on the right. And it's important to note that nobody really wants to see these in places where they're going to fail, and ecology certainly doesn't. So you're really going to see these in areas where they make sense, and that brings us back to that infeasibility criteria that's within the Ecology Manual. Here are some more BMPs, dispersion, downspout dispersion, sheet flow, and perforated stub connection. And there's also some optional BMPs, ones that are not required, but the city can opt into. I'm going to give it back to Ryan to talk a little bit about where we are in the project and the process.
So here's your roadmap to get you to, you know, the drop-dead deadline, which is the very last day of this year, and we are already on track to do that. So we've kind of had the same approach with all the other jurisdictions that we've been dealing with. We have a handful that we're working with concurrently with Bellingham. We've assembled the team, so we have your city departments kind of all on board, so we, you know, this is going to, the code amendments are going to need to be owned by all the city departments, so we're involving them in that conversation before rather than it just be something like a public works initiative. It's really, you know, planning and fire and engineering that's in that conversation. Whenever we approach these, there's kind of some go-to areas that we focus on, so it's, you know, your parking, your stormwater, obviously, your landscaping, even how you handle your soils. So these are kind of some go-to places that we look for in your codes when we start to make recommendations, how we would comply with the permit. And then we go through your code and we make those notations, and then here we are right now. So we're at number four, we're looking at your code and identifying areas where we can kind of fill in the gaps or realize some opportunities so we can get closer to meeting those principles. The good news is that it's really up to the local, at the local level, on how to address this. And we were saying earlier, there wasn't a whole lot of changes that needed to be made in Bellingham. You're already kind of on the right track. You know, one example would be, well, we want to reduce impervious surface ratios. So, you know, we looked at your parking area. There were some opportunities to actually reduce some parking or do shared parking, so that was a very easy kind of a change or recommendation to get closer to what that permit was required. We'll also be looking at some of your detailed drawings. We haven't got all through that yet, but that's another part of your codes that will need to kind of speak to the regulatory part of it and make sure it all kind of works. So then it will be review and adopt, so we'll be here again next month, so you'll actually get to see the changes, and then it'll be implementation. So there's quite a bit of resources out there. You know, Ecology's website, it's great. You could spend, you know, quite a bit of your lunch hour reading up on that, and then there's some other kind of state and local resources, and then also us as your consultant, so you could feed that through staff, and that could be something that we focus on. So with that, that's our brief presentation of what we're working on, so if you have any questions, we're here for you.
Thank you. I think we should just have a discussion and then maybe allow some comment at the end of that discussion. Jeff, you had something?
You can't help but multitask.
Yeah.
It's too much.
It's okay.
I actually have a two-part question. I don't know whether it goes to staff or guests, but I guess one of the things that I've just noticed over time is there are issues with ongoing maintenance over the years on different projects, and one area of concern that I have is seeing catch basin systems that have been set up to capture oil or whatever that are installed and then never touched in the future. And I know, for example, in a building I have, I have to have a backflow inspection every year, but I kind of get the feeling maybe there's not something similar for certain types of installations that are designed for large parking lots. I don't know, I'd like to be educated on that. But the second part of the question is, I saw some pretty pictures of swales in residential areas, and I'm kind of interested in maintenance in that, too. You know, you could have a beautiful swale up there, like you had the photos, and come back another year and it's completely covered with a homeowner that planted ivy and holly trees, you know. How, when you start expanding this sort of program over single-family residential areas, how can you ensure that the original intent and function of those particular designs is maintained? Because you have single-family residents, not larger institutions or shopping centers. So it's a two-part question.
Hi, Renee LaCroix, Public Works. It's an excellent question, and it's something that we, as a community, are faced with as our stormwater best management practices change over time. So currently, if you have a private development, you are required to treat stormwater through a variety of means, and if you have a vault, then we have a private facility inspection program where you're required to maintain it, and we do inspections as necessary or as we're able, and to help you understand what the maintenance is and to make sure it gets done properly. And so this wouldn't be that different, it would just be the type of maintenance that you're doing. With LID in general, it's requiring Public Works operations to shift in how we do things, and it's going to be a community shift as we move forward with these new technologies.
Well, I guess my concern would be, I think there's a common understanding, maybe common, maybe not, that when you buy a house and there's a parking strip out front with a lawn on it, that even though it's a city, in the city right-of-way, that it's your responsibility to mow it, and everybody pretty much knows that, what happens when it's a swale with specific plantings and native plants and a specific water flow? I don't think there's the institutional knowledge out there, and I don't know if Public Works is going to go maintain everybody's parking strip. So I'm just curious, how do all those pieces fit together when you get right down to it in the future, say five years from now, when these are more widespread? How does it actually work?
No, and like I said, you're bringing up excellent questions, and we don't necessarily have it all mapped out. On one of the slides that AHBLO showed you, there's the big education component that goes along with this, to reach out to people, and especially people that have right-of-way strips in the right-of-way, to help educate them on what it is, how it works, how to maintain it. And we haven't, like I said, we haven't got it all mapped out, but we understand it's different from how we're currently doing things, and part of the process moving forward is to figure out what works and what doesn't, and helping people maintain.
Thanks.
I don't envy you.
We actually have some experience already doing this in the city because we, like Renee mentioned, we do it on larger-scale projects, but the, since 2009, our rules for development in the Lake Wacom watershed also require the LID components. And so we've actually got many LID facilities, small scales, on individual residential properties that are already functioning out in the Lake Wacom watershed, and so we've had a little bit of time to kind of see how, what type of education we need to do and what type of inspections we need to do in that more smaller scale, and hopefully we'll be able to learn from that and take that at a larger, community-wide scale.
Lisa?
Not completely off-topic, but just a curiosity. The old way that we used to do our retention ponds, they're, you know, the big pits sloped, fencing around it to try to keep children out or other entities. The example of hopefully the direction we're going where there's more biodiversity, it creates more of an open space. I'm assuming some of these old stormwater retention areas the city maintains, because I know of a couple that are not necessarily part of a subdivision area. Is there any future prospect that maybe through the Department of Ecology, there may be grants or something in order to redo these as they might have to be cleaned out or substantially changed, that we can change them from more of an eyesore to more of a community asset? Is that something that would be looked at in the future?
In an optimistic future, yes. We still have large areas in the city that were developed before there were any stormwater regulations, and so as far as prioritizing where we apply for grants and try and retrofit areas of town, we would first try and work in the areas where there isn't any stormwater treatment or detention, areas that were built out before these regs came into existence. Once we tackle all that, then I think we would get to a point where we would want to retrofit, but that's many, many years out.
Is there anything that could possibly be written in that if an area had to be substantially worked on, that it might be financially feasible to do a comparison to be able to change it out? I'm just thinking of some areas as they might have to be dug out, they have to be cleaned out. There's going to be work done in that area if there's a way to have maybe not a full change, but just more of a...
If there's required maintenance anyway, then, and you're saying, you're giving me an example where there's a situation where there's required maintenance and it might be more cost-effective to implement LID technologies than do the maintenance, yeah, I think that those would be fair game.
Is there a policy or a directive on the books that that would be something to be looked at before something goes forward?
Not at this time. That's something that, do you want to speak to that, Kurt?
Well, I guess one of the things that I'd like to comment on that about is that a lot of the stormwater facilities that you see out there now, under today's codes, would be much, much larger. And to try to go back and try to fix those could be somewhat problematic. What the LID does, we speak in terms of treatment trains, so the thought is you have smaller areas throughout the development instead of these larger, big, open facilities. So hopefully, the future will be somewhat different than the past in those areas, but currently, there's nothing proposed in our code language because we're just talking about codes. But, I don't know, I think maybe we could ask AHBLO to maybe think about that and to suggest maybe some opportunities where we could at least put some placeholder language or something, maybe in some intent statements.
Well, yeah, we have a lot of conversations with staff, so, you know, as we come up and identify these areas, you know, we meet with the different departments, like the maintenance, you know. If we put this in the code, how's this guy actually going to affect, you know, the folks out there maintaining this? Or how much onerous, you know, burden are we going to put on, you know, the adjacent homeowner? So we talk about those logistics as we're getting closer with the draft language. What you're talking about, it sounds like a really big city policy decision that we need to discuss. Usually codes is more the implementation of it, maybe that needs to be a little bit higher up at more of the comp plan level, but in the purpose and intent statements at each one of the code sections, we could look at that.
Are you coming, Kurt?
Yeah, I just have a little concern about the timing. If we have a deadline of the 31st of December, we have about two months to put this thing together. How much time are we going to have to take public comment and look through the options? Just that, you also had mentioned that there may be options to meeting the permit criteria. How many options are there? Is, how much flexibility on a local level is there to adapt this to our own unique needs?
Well, it is an aggressive schedule, but we do want to make sure that we take the time to do it. So we've got preliminary dates out there. If it takes more time, then it will take more time. But I think one of the key things to remember is that when we did the evaluation of our codes, we were already well on our way there. So the changes that you're going to see really are not major changes, at least ones that we, the city, can control. A lot of the bigger decisions of how you do it have already been made. Those were made back in 2012, I believe, at the state level. So at this point, a lot of those bigger policy discussions and maybe the items that take a little bit more time to talk about, those decisions have been already made, and so now we're trying to implement those discussions and decisions that were made. So really, you're not going to see a lot of significant changes. Just an example, our parking code, one of the things in our parking code talks about hard surfacing. Well, hard surfacing has always meant asphalt, concrete, pavement. One of the things that we're doing is we're broadening the definition of hard surfacing to incorporate some of these other standards such as permeable pavements and things like that. So that's just an example of, we're not doing a drastic change, but maybe just minor tweaks to help it encourage LID more.
Well, I heard a couple numbers, just threshold, so it's 2,000 square foot threshold, going to be the new threshold for triggering this permit, whereas 5,000 before? Is that, is that...
All the thresholds for detention, treatments, all exactly the same. None of that detention stays the same, treatment stays the same.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, thanks.
What Jason said, just next time, we'll get on a mic, yeah, but suggesting that the threshold, square footages are not actually changing. So it's 2,000 a day, it'll be 2,000 when this is done, just so everybody can hear that. I had a procedural... Sorry. Jason, you want to clarify? Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, and so those thresholds, it's 5,000 square feet that would trigger an engineered system. So 2,000 square feet is where you'd be subject to some stormwater rules, maybe similar to what a single-family residence would have now. So, but otherwise, the thresholds to require an engineered system or treatment or potentially detention would start at 5,000 and larger, which is the same as we have today.
Yeah, thank you. Procedural question kind of related to what Garrett said. You will be bringing, it sounds like you will be bringing forward maybe code amendments to five of the chapters, so when we have our public hearing in November, are, we're going to see those in a similar format to how we've done other, like code scrub-type things, where you're going to show us the new lang, we're going to see in our packet the new language that's proposed and we'll have a chance to evaluate that?
Correct, yeah, we'll have a draft ordinance associated, just like we do with all of our other code changes, is you'll see exactly what we're changing.
And so at the public hearing, we'll have an opportunity to talk about, if we do have questions about the details?
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Tom, did you have a comment?
The good thing about sitting at this end is that everybody's asked all the questions I was going to. I do have one, one question. Ryan, you, for about 20 seconds, flashed a resources page out of your, out of your present, presentation, and I don't have photographic memory, and I can't write that fast, so is there some way that you could have it distributed, you know, not today, tomorrow, but, you know, in a couple of days?
Can we just, Heather, can we just get a copy of the presentation?
I can put it back up, for one thing. But, but I can work with staff to have these resources published on the website, and as, as they get calls, and they can refer folks to these resources. Okay, sorry about the...
Not, not a problem.
I have a question, a couple of questions. You mentioned reduced, or not reduced parking standards, but changing some of the parking standards. Have we, has there been a discussion about street standards relative to impervious surface and where we're at with, like, what our minimum street standards might be? And I know that that's been a topic that might fit into the subdivision ordinance discussion we're having next, so I don't want to jump the gun, Brent, but if there's a way to give me a little feedback now, I'd be curious if we're doing anything about that.
Sure. Brent Baldwin, Development Manager for Public Works, and you're jumping the gun.
Yeah.
We've actually, so what we did was, with all the, the code chapters, was when we sent them to HBL, they kind of compared them to some of the other jurisdictions they've worked with and gave us suggestions. We're still in the middle of that, and the street standards are the same. There's a, there's some sections of the street code where we have some fairly excessive widths called out in the old code that we really haven't used a whole lot in many years. So that's something we'll expect to see coming forward. Kind of wait to see what's, what we're going to get back from AHBLO for the November meeting for this chapter, but the intent for the overall street chapter, including the subdivision code, which we're talking about next, is really to follow all of this work with some more in-depth look at, at what we can do to our street code to make it easier to use and more, you know, clear for development and things like that.
Okay, because that was kind of my understanding from our past discussions on the subdivision ordinance, was that we'd be looking at the, is it 13?
Yeah.
At the same time, kind of, to, to see how we make them jive better. And so it sounds like that might be coming back with like another round of maybe amendments to 13 later, when we finish up the subdivision?
Yeah, and you can kind of see from the timing and the, and the requirements from the state and all this that's going on right now, we kind of had to shuffle some things around. So the intent is to come back with, with a full amendment to 13, hopefully early in next year. I know Kathy and I were just talking about the subdivision stuff for tonight, and she's going to kind of, I guess, briefly touch on that tonight, but not, not go into great detail until we come back.
Okay. Thanks. And then, one other question, you mentioned a few times, you know, infeasible situations, and I'm assuming that means situations where the soils can't accommodate infiltration or a low-impact development mechanism. Is that kind of what we're talking about? You mentioned several times, there's like a set of criteria for those, and I'm curious about, about that, particularly as it relates to single-family, like, one-off homes throughout the city.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have those with me right now. They're, they're more of the technical manuals, so it's more on the engineering end of that. This is more kind of the policy, but I could be prepared to talk about that a little bit more whenever we bring the proposed amendments. Maybe that's even something that's even put at the beginning of that section. That might be a user-friendly kind of approach to it.
Sure. Jason, you have a follow-up?
Yeah, and so, all those, all that information will, will come out. I really don't know what I could add here to...
No, that's okay.
...what they're saying. The infeasibility criteria is published in the Ecology Manual, and so, like, what they were hitting on earlier, in 2012, and just prior to, Department of Ecology issued and published a new manual, and in there it included all this low, low-impact development stuff. We didn't adopt that by ordinance, that's what we're doing now. And so in the manual, there's a list, infeasibility criteria, that you would go through as a developer and evaluate your property against these infeasibility criteria, to determine whether or not you could apply low-impact development BMPs in your project.
Gotcha. So, thank you. I bring it up just because I'm, I'm a little bit, I'm interested in how we're going to procedurally handle that at a, at a single-family level, because I think when you look at a big project, going out and doing soil testing and looking at these things is a relative drop in the pond for cost, but as a single-family homeowner, if you have an obligation to do, like, hire a geotechnical engineer, do soil sampling on your site to determine if you might meet these criteria, it could add like thousands and thousands of dollars to a single-family home. We already have affordability or permit cost issue, you know, perception in the community. And so, specific to like, and even, I'm not even talking about subdivisions, because the whole subdivision's looking at it collectively, I'm talking about as Joe Schmo with a lot in the Columbia neighborhood comes in and has to deal with this issue. I want to know more about, I'm not, I'm purported to have any answers, I just want to know more about how the city's going to handle that. It'd be great if there were, in my opinion, city resources that could assist people going through that process, so that there's less cost burden on the individual, specific to those one-off type situations. So when we come back, it'd be, I'd be curious to know more about what you guys are thinking about how we're going to handle that. And that's all I've got. Anybody else? All right.
I guess the last thing I'd like to add is that we will be coming back November 10th for the public hearing, and that's at 7:00 PM. However, before then, from 6:00 to 7:00, we're also going to be holding an open house, just outside in the, in the lobby here, kind of more of a low-key question-answer period. So we'll have staff here, AHBLO members, that can also talk to people, ask some specific questions about that prior to, so hopefully we can get maybe some of the questions that people may have out of the way during that less formal situation, so that when we come through the hearing, you'll have a good idea and understanding of what we're talking about.
That's great. And so before we move on to the next topic, is, we always give an opportunity for people to comment, so if there is anybody who wants to comment at this time, I'd like to open it up for comment. Linda, I see you can come down, if anybody else wants to, and give us your comments at this stage, and of course, as Kurt just said, there's going to be kind of a broad opportunity to, to talk about this at the next public hearing. So Linda, go ahead.
Linda Twitchell, Building Industry Association, and officially a senior with two bad knees. So when I see all these pictures of impervious surface, I think of my mom in her wheelchair, and I think of, you know, we're expecting supposedly an aging population in this city, or that's what we're planning for. And I understand that instead of just impervious pervious surface, sometimes you can do things like on driveways, you can have, I don't know what you call them, collection systems on the sides or something. I'm hoping we have some options to make both single-family and public facilities still usable for people who are not, you know, spry and young and, and all that stuff. So anyway, that's my...
Thank you. Bill?
It's only halftime for me, I consider myself still spry and young, but, anyway, the planners know better. Bill Guyer, 1008 16th Street. A couple of things I wanted to comment on. There is some key components of those of us that have either built stormwater facilities or clients that have built them, and I've, I had the pleasure of building one for a subdivision, and I think it's 2003 or so, it's, it's a vault that we put in. It's 56 feet long by about 18, 19 feet wide and 8 feet deep. And, I don't, none of you were on the commission at the time, when we, when it was adopted, but that met the code at the time, and since then, we've monitored it, and in that eight-foot depth, there really hasn't been more than 2, 3, 4 inches of water ever in that facility. And when we build those for subdivisions, we buy city code, we dedicate those, so the ownership of that asset is now us, the city of Bellingham, the taxpayers. It's very key to Commissioner Anderson's questions about priorities and facilities, because the staff well knows, there's an inventory of facilities out there, many of them show up on City IQ, but I think there is an issue that you asked about priorities, and there's probably, I don't know which ones they're, they are, but there's probably some watersheds that have a much more important priority for treating the water before it discharges because of fish runs, habitat, et cetera. So I would encourage that to flavor your review, priorities of watersheds. Secondly, to very much look at the ownership of the facility, because some of those that are city-owned, it's going to be a city's responsibility, and then there are still some that are privately owned. I believe, I hope I'm correct on this, that even if you have a private facility, and on the commercial structures, you have an obligation to maintain, as Commissioner Brown was, was pointing out. So that's something to be, you know, in your mind as well, and has changed the ordinance. And I would underscore that the, the city's facilities, we already have a drainage utility with a drainage tax that was adopted by the city council, that when it was initially adopted, had a third, third, third priority to it. One-third for education, one-third for new facilities, and one-third for maintenance of facilities. And we all pay that tax whenever we pay our water and sewer fee every other month. So there is a revenue stream, there is a financial stream to take care of these facilities, it gets down to how the priorities are set, and where are the funds actually being expended to meet the needs for maintenance, as well as looking at those priority locations and either converting facilities, which would be a good idea, or otherwise maintaining them. So those tools are out there, and we need to look beyond just having to consider if we're going to state funds. So the funds are there. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else like to comment on this topic? Okay, well, we'll have another chance at the public hearing. So thank you, and thank you, guys, and will you be back for the hearing? So look forward to seeing you again, and thank you. All right, so with that, we will move to our second topic, which is the subdivision ordinance update, and looks like we will have Director Sepler and Spell. And we'll do the same thing here and give people an opportunity to comment at the end if they'd, pardon me, if they'd like to. Oh, and real quick, before Kathy, before you start, just for the benefit of Tom, Jeff, and Lisa, we had a work, and everyone listening too, we had a work session with our subcommittee, the subdivision subcommittee, which consists of Commissioner Crooks, and myself, and Garrett, a month, a couple months ago, and went through this exact packet, and so you'll see that when it says PC Subcommittee, the, that's a kind of a summary of what we talked about at that meeting, and we had some, I think, a few members of the public attended, and it was a really good discussion, and, yeah. Oh, were you there? Lisa was there. Jeff, this is for you and Tom. So anyway, that's, that's kind of just framing where we're at, and, and from that, I think Kathy suggested we were going to get to this point, so. Thanks.
Let me see. Just want to see if I can make this just the right... I think that's as good as we're going to get right now. Well, thank you. Kathy Bell, Planning Department. Similar to the presentation you just experienced, the intent of tonight is to briefly go over some key issues that the Planning Commission identified in 2014, actually, almost two years ago. And what staff has done since, as Ali has explained, is we have presented those, we've worked on those key issues from a staff perspective, which is identified on the matrix on the screen, is the staff recommendations, and we have also then taken those recommendations to two different committees, one being the Steering Committee, the other being the Planning Commission Subcommittee. I think it's important to first identify and thank, although there are at least one in the room, if not more, I think there's only one. Would like to thank the members of the Steering Committee, and that committee was made up of David Edelstein, Dick Skiers, Dave Monks, Ralph Black, Adam Morrow, Dean Ferring, and Bill Guyer. And a lot of what we have here stemmed initially as what we brought forward to the Planning Commission for your consideration back in '14, and they have helped us fine-tune that, as well as we brought this degree of information back to Subcommittee, which was comprised of Ali, Garrett, and Steve, and Steve is not here this evening, and Lisa did sit in on that last one. So what I don't intend to do this evening, that we did back in December of 2014, and that is to go through an overview of what a subdivision is, why we subdivide, and all of that, and clearly, at any time, if there's any Planning Commissioner that wants a refresher, or I've, I've met with Mr. Crooks, and we went through just, it's a very technical set of code. It's very similar to what you just heard with the stormwater regulations. So it's not always just your warm, fuzzy code provisions, it is very technical, and a lot of it is dependent on the land. It is available, dependent on utilities, which way they flow, is there water availability, what are the street connections? I mean, there's so much technical aspects that go into this. So I would like to just sort of jump right in, and I do have some overheads as needed. If there's any explanation needed, I can hopefully add some exhibits that will help at least clarify or identify what staff is trying to articulate.
Kathy, if I got to, just a second, just to sit back and, and talk about the role tonight. As the Planning Commission will recall, we've had extensive discussion that framed the issues. We were asked to identify potential solutions. We worked with the Subcommittee to frame them and bring them forward, and we provided to you and the community ahead of this meeting. Our hope is to sort of run through the issues and say, are we roughly right? You know, or is there some issue we should look a little further on? And the reason is, we're sort of in the middle of a process where, if we're roughly right, we feel comfortable in spending the time of crafting code language to match it. And we understand there'll be a lot of work when you get into code language, because God is in the details. But we want to make sure before we go and craft it, we're sort of in the right general area to start. So this is just sort of a midpoint touch base, to make sure we've got the approaches you'd like to see for the issues. We acknowledge that when you do get them back in code form, you might say you want to change it. You know, we, we thought about that, we'd like to move it this way or that way, and that's a very healthy discussion. But we need, at the end of this evening, pretty good direction on each of these topics, whether we're roughly right, whether we need to keep looking, or whether we don't have an issue.
Thank you.
So the primary intent is where the committees had discussion, those are the areas that I intend to focus the most on, and those areas where there was general consensus, give a brief just introduction for the public, and if there has been a change of, change of heart or different thoughts that you would like to add to this, then certainly we'll do that. But this is a lot of information in a very short amount of time, and it took two meetings with Steering Committee to go through it, we still didn't get through it all, we spent one, two-hour meeting with the Subcommittee and still didn't get through it, and we only discussed at the Subcommittee those issues where the Steering Committee's had conversations. So there is a lot of information here tonight, and we do at least want to be able to go over and hopefully spending times on those that we had the most discussion with.
Kathy, from a process tonight, for tonight's process, do you think it would be effective for us to like stop on each topic and discuss them and give you the direction, like Rick just suggested, we're all good with this one, and kind of...
We could cer, we could certainly do that.
One by one, as opposed to like waiting to go through them all? I think it might be easier for all of us that way?
Yeah.
Okay, so...
And if for some reason it's not working, then certainly we can modify as we go forward. This is not a scripted presentation, this is really meant, the, the forum is way too formal for what we had hoped, because this is really where we would like to all be sitting and using a whiteboard and really trying to make sure that we understand the issues. And unfortunately, we are in, in the setting where we are, we don't have a forum that lends to that, although I did bring my Sharpie and some white paper that if we need to start drawing, I'm there.
Okay, well, good, so just for the benefit of the commissioners, you know, I think feel free, this is like an open discussion, so feel free to chime in at any point with, on the topic, with questions for Kathy or Rick, and then we can, I think that'll be the best way to do it. And that's kind of how we did it at the Subcommittee, and it was, it was better to just have... to just have that open discussion.
Yes.
But also keep in mind that we're not talking about solutions here. We're not talking about the details. It's just the concepts.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
So first one to present is lot standards. Currently, right now, all subdivisions or lots that are created through subdivision are required to have minimum lot widths and lot depths. And a lot of our lot widths are established based upon our existing zoning and our zoning and our existing platted patterns. So those two are, they come together. So for example, in a lot of 5,000 zones, we require 50-foot lot width because they're platted at 50 by 100-foot lots. In areas where there's 5,000, we also have 40-foot lot widths that are traditionally platted, and so we require 40-foot lot widths. What we have found, or at least what we presented back in 2014, is the question, is that working? Are there alternatives? And what we presented to both the Steering Committee and the Subcommittee is we believe they're working. The one area of deviation that we would like to be able to explore is lot depth. Because for right now, all depths are the same, and they're all required to be 60 feet. And we think that there's opportunities, which we would like the opportunity to go back and explore and to bring some more information, where it's not always necessary to have a 60-foot lot depth. And there's a lot of our lots that are platted at 100 feet, 125. 125 works because 60 and 60 is 120. But when you have 100, you can't get to 60s. So we believe there's some infill opportunities that maybe are not being matured that we'd like to have the opportunity to explore. One of the other things that came out of that was the opportunity for some administrative deviations in the lot width and lot depth standards. And so the first key issue that's on there with lot standards deals with two, deals with two things, is to be able to explore lot depth and also to explore administrative deviations. And there was general consensus from both committees on that.
Any comments or questions, Lisa?
Just to make sure I'm reading this clear, and for the public who may not be able to see what's in front of us, under staff recommendation, it says to maintain the current lot standard regulation for single-family uses and eliminate the minimum lot standards for multifamily. So I'm assuming your example of the 100-foot depth, whatever currently is required for the lot standard for single-family would not necessarily be amended. Part of this would be really looking at the commercial, industrial, and multifamily. Is that a correct assumption based on staff recommendation?
Well, some of the, some of the issues that we talked about with multifamily, commercial, industrial is questioning, why do we even have any lot width and lot depth standards? And should we open that up? And there was general consensus on that part. So I did not bring that part forward in this discussion. Currently, right now, there's a requirement in residential, multi, and commercial, industrial to have a 60-foot lot width and 60-foot lot depth. If you just look at our downtown, there are many buildings that aren't 60-foot wide. So why 60 feet? And can we be flexible? And should we be flexible? And so those are some of the opportunities that we would like to analyze further.
I think maintaining some administrative flexibility for lot width is important to be considering because I'm sure that not every site lends itself to a 50-foot wide lot, too. And so that's, I think that's important. I know that's part of the plan, but I do, I want to reiterate that I think that's important.
Yes.
If we do go for any sort of administrative flexibility, it's really context-based.
Yeah.
We want the ability to match surrounding patterns or take advantage of it. As Kathy just noted, sometimes a strict application would be inconsistent with the way it developed.
Yeah, we might have an old paper plat that's got 40-foot wide lots, and everybody's built out on them, right? And so we want to be able to look at that. And yeah.
So what I'd like to show here real quick is just the table out of the subdivision ordinance currently. And what you can, what you can see from here is this is just the single-family and duplex zoning designation. But under the minimum lot size, this is our zoning. And you can see from that that there's, there's associated numbers with these. So as I talked about, in 5,000 zones where they're platted at 50s, 50 foot's the lot width. Where there are 5,000 zones and they're platted at 40s, then you can have a 40-foot lot width. There's a lot, this one is actually kind of unique. It's on Sea Home Hill, but they're platted at 55 by 125s. So the idea is neighborhood character. And the question that we're asking with deviation is if you're walking on the street and you happen to go by a 40-foot nine-wide lot, are you going to be able to distinguish that from a 50-foot wide lot? So when is that, whoops, when is that deviation too much? And when is it not enough? And those are some things that we want to explore to be able to bring forward. Some examples that I have, one, and everything I show, if you don't see any streets, you don't see any names because I'm trying to protect the innocence, if it's already a done public record, then I'm putting it all out there. So just kind of want to make that clear. So here is an example of a short plat that was done. And the point I want to highlight here is that we're in a 5,000 zone in an area that's traditionally platted at 50 by 100. Given a long history that I won't go into, they had to seek a variance. And what this says right here is 49.67 feet. Because it didn't meet 50 feet, they had to go a variance. We did not have any ability, and that's the lot that contained the existing home. So those, that's a very small deviation, but it's an example that shows, had we had a little bit opportunity, we could have made that rather than go through the whole hearing and variance process. The other scenario or opportunities, while this may not work even with deviations, is still worthy to show, is that this has come forward as a proposal. But because it doesn't meet our code, and we don't see the variance criteria, there's a couple, there's many things going on here that we hope to address. But the one is, is you have a street out front, you have an alley, and you have an existing home. This is, this is in a neighborhood that's predominantly characterized by homes fronting the street. This home happens to be in the back. So the question is, at what point, here's the platted property line right there, at what point can you draw a property line and put a home in the front or a home in the back, where they choose? Is it 45 feet? Is it 46 feet? 47 feet? At what point? But these are the type of examples that are real, that we get at the counter all the time, that we've sort of stored and we've taken. And we have these collections that have led to a lot of our recommendations that went forward to the committees. So some of these are real life, some of these are going to be made up, but they're conversations and they're real, and they're opportunities that we just want to be able to explore.
Thank you. Any other questions on this? Lisa?
Not a question, but just a comment. Thank you. You may have planned on expanding upon this, but I do think lot standard is going to be one of the aspects that the public is going to be most concerned about. And I appreciate you expanding it. It makes a lot of sense for me to be in there. But when you start thinking, you know, saying that we're going to maybe have some variance and flexibility with it, it conjures up a lot of thought of what that could be. So your examples, I think, for people watching are very good to demonstrate what it is you're talking about. So I appreciate you taking a moment to explain it a little further.
And clearly, when we come forward, we will have much more detail.
Jeff?
Just an editorial comment. You know, we, over the years, have heard a lot about neighborhood, just the general neighborhood character in older Bellingham and the core. And I would just point out that one of the differences between newer subdivisions and the old neighborhoods is this is very common in the old neighborhood, is the way things were developed in 1904 or 1915 was very different. You didn't have cookie cutter chops. You had things following contours. You had things going over lot lines. You had all sorts of things. And so I would actually just like to acknowledge that this is actually part of neighborhood character, is that you don't have everything in a uniform system, and this is a good thing. And it matches the existing character of the older neighborhoods in Bellingham.
Thank you. So you think there's general consensus amongst the group regarding this? I think so. Thank you.
And this is a good time to step back because it's something that, that staff said to the committees, as well as we said in, when we first were before the commission in 2014. This is not about changing densities. So the site before you right there has 10,000 square feet in a 5,000 zone. So the question is, is this, is this the opportunity for an additional infill? You've got street, sewer, water, everything there. So it's not about taking, this isn't about taking a site and looking at that. We'll talk about that. There's some opportunities that we're bringing forward as well. But again, it's, we're not, there's no rezones, there's nothing involved in this discussion. It's really working with what we have. And what Jeff has correctly identified, that we continue to say, is we have two types of development in the city. We have infill and we have greenfield. And they are different, and they should have a set of different rules. And what we're finding in our greenfield development is that they're using mostly cluster subdivisions. And when you use cluster, you have flexibility, you have different standards, you have different needs. I mean, everything is different. So some of these are going to be more applicable to infill opportunities established in existing neighborhoods. The others are going to be more applicable and probably more commonly used in the greenfield developments, more on the perimeter of our city. Heather, I don't know how to get it back to my, oh, I think I got it. Look at that. I do know how. Thank you for that help. Public versus private infrastructure. One of the things that came out of the Steering Committee is very early on, and the Planning Commission said, you know, go forth and look at public versus private infrastructure. And some of that issue we just, or some of that discussion we just had with stormwater. And stormwater facilities, the city has taken the policy that we are going to own and maintain stormwater detention facilities that are associated with single-family subdivisions. We don't have, I think I can almost say, we don't have any private infrastructure in terms of streets, sewer, and water in single-family subdivisions. We looked and we explored, is that something we really want to do? And we, we don't believe as an outright code requirement or policy, that's something we want to do. But we think, and what we'll talk about a little bit further on, is the infill toolkit, if, if that option in certain circumstances is allowed to be implemented, then that opportunity will afford itself. Because the infill toolkit does allow the construction of private alleys and private lanes. And it will give us the opportunity to look at those, those different infrastructure needs. So the recommendation coming forward was, let's leave it as is, but maybe we can explore and expand upon this as we look into the use of the infill toolkit in certain subdivisions. Pipe stem lots. What I, what I want to be able to do first is just be able to show the public, and again, refresh you what, what a pipe stem is. Because some people call them pan handles, some people call them flag lots. They have all different references to them. We call them pipe stems. So generally, this is really awkward, and I apologize for the back and forth. So a pipe stem lot would be this lot in its entirety. The pipe stem portion of the lot would be from this dashed line to the street. There's a lot of provisions within the subdivision ordinance that talks about pipe stems. And the recommendations that came out of the, both committees is further exploring the opportunity to not require pipe stems. And what I hope to show you is at least a few situations why that probably is an okay idea. Here's a recorded short plat. You can see the pipe stems of lots three and four. And then you can see those hashed areas. Those hashed areas are a common utility and access easement. So the easement actually overrides the function and the use of those properties. So that begs the question is, why do you need to have those pipe stems? We can go here as well, and we can, we can look at that example just the same. You can see the double pipe stems, and you can see the hashed area. And the hashed area is the legal instrument that affords or gives the right to those back lots, to legal access to street and utilities. This is the most interesting one, in my opinion. And it happens to be one of my favorite little hidden developments in the city. But when you look at it on a map, you're like, what the heck is going on? In real life, the driveway actually goes like this. And in the middle of that driveway is the most beautiful tree. So you look at that, and you look at all the wasted space that lots could be utilizing for other reasons and other purposes. Again, we're not talking about density. We're looking at an efficient use of land and what is really needed in order to provide these lots with street, with access to street sewer and water. So those are just some small examples of, again, what we would like to be able to bring forward. And we believe that the easement has been tested over time in the court system, that it is a legal instrument and done properly and with the provision in there that it can't be relinquished without permission by the city, that we believe it's something that can last in perpetuity and last just the same and provide the same opportunity that these pipe stems do while affording more efficient use of land. And both committees were supporting, they were supportive of that. The issue that comes with that, that we did discuss, like in this particular example, right now, whoops, right now, there's a requirement from this property line to this existing structure to be five feet, because it's a setback requirement. If that pipe stem goes away, is there a setback requirement? Well, no, it'll be the width of the easement. Then that starts to ask the question, well, how, why does the easement have to be? It doesn't have to be 20 feet because the driveway is not 20 feet. But then you start to look at, can you have an easement immediately at the wall of the home? And of course, we say no. Does it have to be five feet? You're hard servicing. Does it, what does it have to be? Those are the standards that we would like to bring forward as well with our, with our proposal to eliminate the pipe stem requirement.
Thank you. Jeff?
So I'm kind of curious, because this would appear to essentially be encouraging landlocked parcels that are only connected with an easement. And so presumably, a developer would have to own all the property, or you'd have to be positioned to negotiate an easement to have a lot on record that then wouldn't have public road access. Because I, just everything I've heard over the decades was, you always need public road access. You know, you have to do your pipe stem. And this almost sounds like you would have landlocked parcels that are only accessible through an easement on some common or other property. And then reading this further, and the city would be a party to that easement. And I'm just trying to figure out how, how all this works and how big a departure from historic practice this really is for the city of Bellingham and for other cities. This is quite a new idea, at least as far as what I've been exposed to.
Correct. In some municipalities, pipe stems are actually prohibited. In some municipalities, they do it the way that we're suggesting. In others, they do it as we do it currently today. It is a big shift. And we did a big shift even last time when we updated our subdivision ordinance and we provided options. Everything used to be a 30-foot pipe stem regardless. And then we dropped them down to 20, and then we allowed 15 side-by-sides. So we've been eventually evolving, identifying what is the sole purpose of this pipe stem? And it's to provide frontage, just to provide the legal right to access. Can we do it in other ways so that we are not consuming, there are sometimes, we have three 15-foot side-by-side easements. That's 45 feet for a 10-foot wide driveway. And the question is, can that land be better utilized? And that's the opportunity that we're really trying to look at.
If I might, this is a privilege that's already extended to property owners. They're allowed to plat today with a pipe stem. Kathy hit the nail on the head. If we're able to use an easement, we'd have area that might be able to accommodate low-impact development, deal with the stormwater more efficiently. It doesn't change the density. Nothing here will allow something to develop more than could allow today. But it does give us that option to accommodate more things better. And secondly, all those odd angles that you have to mechanically do that no one, when they walk by the development, will ever see, unless someone built an odd fence to follow them, would disappear. They'd be regularized then. So you get the chance to LID and other uses, perhaps even common areas, greater plantings, things of that nature. You minimize the redundancy, and you make it more regular. But again, no additional lots would be created that would be beyond what could be created today.
Right. And I, I don't want to sound like I'm not in support of it. I think it's a great idea. I just think back at my history in the county and, and various neighborhood wars between neighbors over maintenance. neighbors over maintaining the easement, you know, and if, when you have a pipe stem, it's your pipe stem and you can decide when to grade it and not degrade it. And now it's sort of like you have neighbors that have to work together and I can tell you sometimes that doesn't work so well. And then this, I hear the city could, would be a party to it. And I'm just thinking, wow. If you went 40 miles out in the county in some areas, this would not work very well at all. You get some pretty cantankerous people. So anyway, I'm just kind of curious because an easement approach is quite different than having your own property, your own pipe stem, your own maintenance, your own ability to do whatever you want, your own plantings, run other power lines on, whatever. This is a whole different thing. So just curious.
And just to add to the, the city being a party, the city is a party to the easement only to ensure that that cannot be relinquished without our consent so that you don't truly get landlocked parcels. We're not there to enforce, we're not there, and that, that would be made very clear. We're just, it's similar to like a covenant that, that we currently do right now.
And in terms of the maintenance, again, it's like the lobby in a condominium building. You know, they could be, rarely are they left to disrepair. Folks contribute to a fund, the fund is dedicated, and there typically is a requirement for some maintenance agreement of those facilities if they're privatized.
I would add-
Condos have all kinds of fun with that, by the way.
Jeff, I would add though that like today, you might see three, like Kathy said, three 15-foot side-by-side pipe stems, but the city will require a single point of access to the public right of way. So you have one of those 15-foot pipe stems with an easement over it that's shared by everybody. So it's not really like each person gets their own driveway. You know, they own land that nobody's using and they all share a driveway anyway. So it's, personally, I don't know if it's a huge shift because you make us do an easement over the top of them anyway.
Yeah, I'm fine. I was just, it was just interesting because I had actually done a pipe stem with Kathy years ago and I just was a little familiar with it and I was just, this is a little different. So thanks.
I think when we get into the weeds of how you guys want to structure it, it's going to be very interesting to talk about the things like you brought up, like how far from setback from the house you end up being and things like that. Is there general consensus or is this a topic that we need to continue consideration of? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Second page. Lot design standards. I just have a few to show you and kind of expand on this. Right now, there really, other than a lot width and a lot depth, there really are no other provisions. And there's times when staff looks at these proposed lot lines and, and you just kind of know it's not right, but you don't really have anything to possibly support you. And one of the things we try to encourage people is think about, you're going to install a fence. And is the fence going to make sense for how you can actually functionally use your lot? So there are some very detailed, but not wanting to go through those. But the idea is, should we establish some logical boundary guidelines to avoid potentially situations like this? And these are real-life examples, by the way. That's a very interesting lot line. And you can sit there and say it works and I will agree with you all day long, but I'm not really sure that that is the best interest. If we go and look at another one. We can zoom out of here a little bit. This one is actually really interesting and it happens to be another planner's favorite subdivision in the city. I'm joking, of course. But what happened here is a couple different things. One is the pipe stem, providing frontage on Lynn Street. The other is this jog around an existing structure. The most interesting part about this is how this was developed, and there happens to be a driveway up here, is that the home was put in the back on the alley. And so they don't even really functionally use this pipe stem portion and they don't have to use that. So again, could we have looked at something and done something better? Is this what we want when we talk about logical boundaries? These are just two of the very many examples out there, just trying to get you thinking about, is this an area we should, should we focus on? Is it worth exploring? Or are these situations okay? So it's sort of the question.
Any thoughts?
I think it's something we should be considering. I'm a little bit nervous whenever we talk about design and we get into staff discretion about what's right. I know we deal with that with design review a lot. So like number five, for example, all lots should be designed to take advantage of topographic and natural features, view orientation and privacy. Different people have different opinions about what's the right view. And I just want to make sure that as we get into the details, staff keeps that in mind because we can get too much discretion at the staff level can really make people feel like they're not in control of their own project. That's my only comment. Sorry, Jeff.
I just, just to clarify, my understanding was, single-family dwellings don't normally have design review. So is this the one exception to that where the lot design would have review, but the structure wouldn't?
They, they would be standards within review of a short plat application.
Okay. Site design.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think Ollie was trying to draw the parallel of the, the discretion that our regulations are established in design review and trying to sometimes come to a conclusion can be somewhat challenging and in the, in the eyes of the beholder and maybe caution us how we draft these, maybe to avoid that and make it a little bit more streamlined, I think is what I'm hearing.
Exactly. The ability to quantify, sometimes those things helps.
If I could follow up on, for example, with topography, we've seen plats that have come in, I've seen them over time, where just a simple reorientation minimizes the cut and fill dramatically on the site and preserves the slope. You know, it, it's just a matter of thinking of alternatives rather than just gridding it without being thought, without thoughtlessly in a sense. So we want to just have something that guides you to look, look at the topography before you draw the lines. See if you can work with the topography because it's going to minimize your cut and fill, preserve native vegetation, lots of good things like that. Those are all things that become those guidelines to help deal with it. And we can hang our hat by saying, see, have you tried this?
Thank you.
The next one is legal lot. And the thing that's really interesting about this is the city actually adopted our subdivision regulations in 64, five years prior to this date. They had, they had regulations, but then they amended them in 69. And one of the things that's interesting about that is we determine when a parcel has meets and bounds or is a portion of a platted lot, we, we require them to demonstrate that that was created prior to this 1964 date. And that's to verify that it was legally established under the subdivision regulations. Well, the thing that, that isn't identified in our regulations is that the city didn't adopt their lot line adjustment provisions until 1973. So we have two different set of regulations, but we're applying them both to a date and one of, one of those is not applicable to 64, it's more applicable to 73. So we would like to be able to incorporate and establish that because there are times somebody sold five feet after 64 but before 73 and we say you're not a legal lot. So again, we would like to bring it up to our current practice. Not, not a big issue, it's a very small, minor cleanup. The other is a site analysis and I'll start out by identifying that we did not have time with either committee to discuss this. The idea, and I, I can imagine and probably safely say that had we had time, there would be a lot of discussion with this particular item. Staff would, would just be asking you to bring forward the opportunity for us to explore because we think that this is worthy of discussion at a public hearing because we would like to hear from the public as well as the, any other constituent that would like to come discuss this. And basically what it is, is it's, it's trying to fit a development pattern to the existing land rather than to fit the land to a development proposal. And it's how can we work with what we have to try to minimize, again, take back the low-impact development strategies? How, how can we minimize to ultimately maximize? And that's what we're asking for your guidance and direction to be able to go do.
Jeff? And Tom?
So is there a threshold under which this, if this is considered and this moves forward, at which it would apply? Or is it just for greenfield developments? Or is it for, for, I'm just trying to get a handle on when you would actually kick this in so you wouldn't end up capturing, you know, a minor lot line adjustment or, or some kind of fairly minor process and all of a sudden you're trying to actually establish neighborhood context and other things. Is there, is there a threshold or is this just a general concept that's just being started to be talked about?
Concept being started and that's a great, that's a great point to discuss. Clearly, things that are, things that are minor, meant to be very quick processes, yes, we would like to keep those that way. If they have critical areas involved somewhat, this is already going to occur anyway. I think mostly the intent is, is when we move to those greenfield developments because that's where we find most of the undisturbed and the most topography, the most challenges that are out there. So how can we work with that? And, and I think there's a lot of things that we're going to discuss tonight or bring forward that will also help that. So not wanting it to be a burden, we want it to be an asset is, would be the goal at the end of the day.
Tom had a comment?
Well, I was, I was going to go with the threshold too because you, you mentioned some kind of pre-design review and that brings a whole nother level of bureaucracy or, you know, another hurdle for somebody to jump over. And if it's somebody who's got one or two lots, I, I don't see the, the real value in that. I do see value when you, when you start talking about long plats for sure and probably short plat in some fashion, maybe, but long plats for sure. I just want to make sure that we're not establishing a maze for the public to run through trying to get some kind of reasonable development out of their land. If I could just follow up on that. I've worked with site analysis before. It's typically on large subdivisions, threshold very high, usually greenfield, it's acreage. And the reason is, is that it, it allows us to have a better understanding of how the systems work. In many cases, in, in some areas, folks masquerade a site then come in and plan a project and they lose opportunities that we could identify for trail corridors, to work with existing development. We may have knowledge of what's happening next door that would affect the design. Seems to me that if we get in on, and we agree, it shouldn't be for one or, or four lot infill projects, it should be for 10-acre, 20-acre kind of developments. And it's worth the step because quite frankly, a good, good proponent is doing that anyway. You know, but they can get our input and we can discuss together about it.
Thank you. Garrett and then Lisa.
Well, I, I agree with the thresholds and I think that's important to keep in mind when we move on this. One of the things that just concerns me when I see things like this is how do you, the idea is to induce higher quality development. And how do you do that through a regulation? And this would be drafted into the ordinance. I, I think we need to be cautious that as this comes forward. You know, is this something that you're talking about additional neighborhood meetings, neighborhood input? Or are we talking about more of a design criteria checklist like you would have at a multifamily design review? You know, because what you don't benefit from at all is having non-owner stakeholders determining site analysis. Not to say that it, there could be, it wouldn't be an asset to have a criteria or a checklist that people can use to guide them, to induce them to create higher quality developments. So I think that distinction needs to be made. Are we talking about a design review or are we talking about neighborhood reveal?
Rick, for the most part, answered what I was going to ask because I was making assumption when I read through this that it was more applicable to a larger development. But I, I do see a bit of a benefit, other than just trying to maximize what could happen in a greenfield development. But if you're integrating a new large development adjacent to another, like, you know, multifamily, commercial, residential, single-family, working with the planning office to really kind of look overall holistically of how it integrates in, they may be able to make suggestions that would not only utilize it better, but also help integrate flow and everything else and opening up the prospect of connecting additional green spaces which would benefit the community that would, you know, be, be developed next to. So I kind of thought it would be a positive thing to look at. But I do have the same concerns of not necessarily adding another large layer to the process. I kind of, when I was looking at this, I saw it as more of meeting with the planning office and reviewing everything in advance before they get too far down the road where perhaps too much money's been invested, that shifting gears becomes more, you know, cost prohibitive. Whereas if sitting down with the planning department with a couple of people going over everything, especially since you know the city, you might be able to, be able to make some very good suggestions that would, you know, prevent some of the difficulties that come down once we get to the public hearing.
If I could respond, that's a very good point. I think the hardest thing to do is when someone designs a project and comes in and it's finished and try to change that project, even if there are great opportunities that presented themselves because someone spent a great deal of time and money developing a concept. This is to say, on those larger projects, come see us early. We're just asking you, the site analysis is largely an inventory. What's out there? You know, and any good proponent will want to know that. Let's talk together before you go out and hardline it and see if there's some things we can work on together. We don't think it adds a burden because of the, the size of the project. And also, if we do this right, we could avoid that awkward issue down the road of saying, you know, the trouble is, is that road can't go and connect there. It never could have connected there, but there's this alternative that would have worked. Let's get that out early.
All right. Kathy?
See, we're doing great. We're on page three and we're 45 minutes into it. So I'm sort of having deja vu actually because it seems like it's, this information is so rich, it's so technical, but at the same time, somehow we have to try to keep moving. It's hard. So the next, the next page is lot averaging and I'm obviously never going to do my presentation this way again because it's not doing really what I want it to. Okay. So lot averaging. The city currently, right now, has two lot aver, actually has three lot averaging tools, if you will. One of them is, we coined it lot averaging. And basically what that says is if, and I'm just going to use simple examples, if you have a 10,000 square foot lot in a 5,000 zone, that would suggest you get two lots. Let's say that you have a home that is so placed that without drawing these goofy lines or property lines or whatever, you, you can only, you can't get two 5,000 square foot lots. What this provision says is if you've got density for two, you should be able to create two with the provision that no lot is less than 90% of the minimum lot size requirement. So no lot is less than 4,500 square feet. Where this really stemmed from was the pipe stems. Because the pipe stems don't count towards the overall area of the lot. So if you had a 10,000 square foot lot and you could divide it into two, but you had to do a pipe stem, you would not be able to subdivide that without this lot averaging provision. So again, you're, we're, we're talking about the opportunities of achieving the zone density and that's one provision that allows you to do that. The other two, the one-on-one half and the one and three-quarter rule, they've actually morphed in time and, and I, I'll go through them ever so quickly. In 19, prior to our zoning in 1982, every lot of record was a legal building site. 1982, we said, oh, now you need to consolidate your lots to meet a minimum lot size. And how we sort of helped feel the pain of that for some people because if they had 10 lots and now maybe they have one, we said, oh, if you have one and a half times the density, we'll allow you to create two lots, both lots being substandard to the minimum lot size requirement. Back in 1997, when we adopted our current regulations, that was a- Back in 1997, when we adopted our current regulations, that was a big topic before council. And so what they did is, they wanted to get rid of the one and one half rule, because they thought it was, it was a provision that was potentially being abused and was not resulting in good land division. So what they did as a compromise is to keep the one and one half rule, and there's decision criteria, and the hearing examiner has to consider that. So, the one and one half rule, while used maybe once or twice every two or three years when it is used, and the hearing examiners finding support, it's a very good infill opportunity. It's been proven to be that, because every time it's been brought forward for the council to get rid of, they keep being reminded of why it's a good tool. The one and three-quarter rule is an administrative, and it's the same concept, but if you have one and three-quarters times the density, administratively will allow you to further subdivide that parcel. The trick with the one and one half rule and the one and three-quarter rule is you have to have multiple lots of record. Because if you go back to what I said in the beginning, if you had multiple lots, they incorporated or implemented the one and one half rule to allow you to further subdivide those. But we have so many situations where we have parcels that have never been platted, but, and they're almost there. Like, it might be 19,000 square feet in a 10 zone, you have 1.9 times the density. Is that an opportunity for infill to be able to subdivide? You have a 9,500 square foot lot in a 5,000 zone. Keep in mind that this does not grant you, I mean, it still requires you to comply with that table that we set. You still have to have your minimum lot width, you still have to have your minimum lot depth, but what it does, it allows you to be a little bit more flexible on the final site area. So, what's before you is not, we're, we're not asking to change the one and one half rule, one and three-quarter of the lot averaging, but to create, um, what we're suggesting is a 90% rule. And the difference between that and the one and one half is one and one half, you have multiple lots of record, they've already been platted. The 90% rule is the same concept, but you may have only one parcel that potentially has never been platted. So it's using the same concept, but in two different situations. Again, how effect, how often do we see this? Probably not, but the time that we see it, when we'd like to be able to use it, sure would've been nice.
So, this is an issue I'll just expand on, 'cause we actually did fieldwork in another jurisdiction I worked on, on this issue. Folks said, well, they'll change the whole neighbor character. We took a 10,000 square foot lot, and we marked it with lathe, and we then marked it for a 9,000 square foot, uh, well, the 10% less. And it was not discernible. It wouldn't allow a significant change in character, the buildings all sat about the same way, but there was a building that went in. And I think that's the key. The key is, um, if it's applied, it, we don't wanna do things that are dissimilar, and we don't wanna do things that when you'd walk by and go, something's very different in that. We do wanna do things that are keeping with the general development pattern of the area. Um, we suggest that 10% is not discernible on that big of a lot.
Thank you. Garrett, do you have a comment?
As I said, the distinction between what we already allow is that this change would say you don't have to have the full square foot, you don't have to have 10,000 square feet, you can use the 90% with 9,500 square feet.
Yes.
Right.
Yes. It's, it's using the same principles of one and one half and the one and three-quarter rule.
Sure.
Lisa, do you have a question?
Just a quick comment. I'm assuming along with if we did implement the 90%, there would be some kinda caveat that, as Rick has stated, that it has to be so that the design is not discernible to be different, that it fits in with the character of the area for the infill. I'm assuming that would somehow be related in to be able to utilize this.
That's what we believe that the lot design standards of that table already do, so they would need to be compliant with those. Yes.
Jeff?
So I have what might be kind of a tricky question, but, you know, the development pattern that I've seen in Bellingham has been, particularly the older sections of Bellingham have been that, as, um, houses were built over the decades, that, and as a neighboring lot became available, some people bought that lot. Um, you know, maybe they thought their family would, you know, a sibling or a kid could build a house on it, whatever. They had, some lots had been obtained. And then there's the consolidation that's happened, where the owners didn't even realize that they were, all of a sudden, since you had two adjacent lots that had the same ownership, this, I don't know if it's the state, the county, the city, they get combined automatically. And, uh, then zoning happened, and then in the future happens, and all of a sudden, you can't use that lot, you can't separate that lot out. And I'm just curious, when the city has done its inventory of available lots, that we've talked about a lot in this, um, in the planning commission, you know, I've heard from Greg, there are X number of lots available in the city of Bellingham, how many of those, particularly in the older sections of the city, are actually bounded by not having lot coverage, having to go through one of the, like, the, um, the one and a three-quarter rule or something else to try to take a, a former legal lot of record that's been consolidated because it had common ownership, to split that lot out, and then find out they can't, because the zoning overlay that came in afterwards has a different square footage, and all of a sudden you have this tangle. And so we've got stranded lots in the city that can't be developed, but they're still in the city's inventory when you guys are looking at your UGA discussion. I don't wanna reopen everything, I'm just, if there's a place to fix that, this is a place to fix it. So I'm just curious.
And we do have a provision in our zoning ordinance that somewhat deals with that, and, and actually, in a lot of situations, it's, it's been very effective, and that's our minimum site area exception. So, we, and basically what that says, just say for fun, if you were, if you, if, if you were on like a, a 40 by 12, 112-foot lot in a 5,000 zone, you clearly don't have the 5,000 square feet. Let's say you had two lots, your house sat entirely on one. More than 50% of the, of the lots around you were also on 40 by 112-foot lots. If that lot is vacant, we'll allow you to build on that lot, because again, we're looking at neighborhood character. So, we have a provision that deals with that for the most part, but there are times when you're right, and I don't know if they've been counted in the inventory, but not every situation that's out there where there's vacant lot is gonna be able to be built upon. But we continue to look and we evolve into infill ideas and opportunities, and I think a lot of what we're proposing here is maybe that next step. And, and as we get more and more creative and, and as infill continues, I think people are going to be able to accept other types of infill as well. And I think that's hopefully what we're gonna find through this process, is that 20 years ago, I, I don't think that we were ready for some of these. Now I think we're ready for some of these, hopefully many of these. So, I, 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 we do have provisions, I mean, this is just another, I mean, we can continue to grab all these different ideas, um, that are, that we can currently use, but I, I can't, we can't talk about the comp plan lots of.
And I could, I could say that the encumbered lots were not included. Lots that didn't have adequate areas to develop were not included.
Right.
And again, um, there are some that through, um, current provisions could come back in and replat, but that's a replat process they'd have to do. We didn't anticipate that as much, uh, but that's very fine-grained, and I don't think it's in the many hundreds. I think it's a handful of lots, quite frankly, that are, um, so encumbered. But, you know, we'll see, we'll see in a sense. Some of the rules we're talking about might allow those. We have every day people coming in with interesting subdivisions and short plats to try to meet the, the square foot requirements. It seems somewhat maddening to go through a mechanical chase, uh, to do it, and still would meet our current code, but the resulting product doesn't make any sense.
Right, and I, and one of the questions that, that I would have, just looking at the overall environment, is, you know, is it better if there is a large, you know, a double lot that doesn't quite meet the criteria, than is that would the city, I guess through the planning process, see it as a more desirable opportunity for an ADU versus trying to create a separate legal lot record? And it's a two, two very different pathways to getting infill, one that has the potential for, you know, a, a separate legal owner-occupied starter home versus another that is, okay, well, ADUs are gonna be the answer to infilling. And part of this discussion is driving that in one direction or another. So I'm just trying to, in my brain, I'm trying to tie that together as far as how do ADUs interact, um, particularly if you get to the point of talking about detached ADUs at some point. What's the difference between a detached ADU versus trying to get opportunities to get separate lots? You know, it's a, it's a big topic, so we don't need to solve it right now, I'm just bringing it up.
Oh, good, good. Um, what I would say is, um, largely what, what we're talking about is not, you know, we certainly, we look to find new opportunities, but a lot of this is able to be facilitated now, it's just it's so awkward when you do it. It seems like if we fix the rules, we can do things better. Um, there are some new opportunities that we are looking for, and we're clearly gonna tell you where they are.
Um, one, one, uh, comment that I wanna point out on this is that, um, the steering committee brought forward, um, lot, a lot averaging concept of wanting to implement different housing types, different housing forms, and, um, staff doesn't believe that's the, that lot averaging is the appropriate tool to do that, and that we've actually implemented those, um, somewhere else, and, um, so, that, that's the one comment that I didn't, so, their comment is not forgotten, we just think it's put better in a different, uh, provision.
Thanks. I think it's about making more efficient use of the land we have at very baseline level. I mean, you know, if you have my neighborhood, in the Clumby neighborhood, there's a bunch of 5,000 square foot lots, and a lot of people own an adjacent 4,000 square feet, and it, you know, I'd, I'd rather see that 9,000 square feet have two houses on it than a huge side yard. That's not a very efficient use of our land, so I just, at a very baseline level, this is like, to me, it's very simple. It's just about finding opportunities to not even squeeze, put another house in a lot that's basically big enough for that house already, it just might be a little tiny bit smaller. Um, so I, I don't know, it seems simple. I, I have one question, though. You said there's three things, there's the one and a half rule, there's the one and three-quarter rule, there's the 90% rule that we have, that, that true lot averaging. I thought we were gonna talk about making that smaller as a part of this code update, going to 80% maybe. In my mind, if you've got 20,000 square feet, and it's a 10,000 square foot zone, and you're saying you can have one 11, right now, under the current rules, you can have 11,000 square foot lot and a 9,000 square foot lot. I think having a 12 and an 8 isn't that big of a jump, but it provides that much more flexibility for those unique sites. And the same is true in it, with a 10,000 square foot lot, and you have a 45 and a 55, that's not that different from a 4 and a 6, and I'd like to see us push that, at least ask, and see what, how people react. Uh, there's no harm in maybe going to 80%, and it would give us even more flexibility to deal with these unique lot situations. So, I, I didn't see that in here, I thought that's something we'd be talking about, I'd like to see us have that discussion.
And if there's general consensus to move forward on that, clearly that's something staff would.
I don't know, Lisa?
If you move forward with that, I would suggest maybe possibly a two-tiered, 90% on a, a smaller lot size configuration, 80% for the larger lot size configuration.
Yeah.
Cause as you said, at a 20,000 foot, the 80% visually, the sense of space, um, being able to have green space, it won't be as largely impacted, but you get to those smaller lots, and I, I think it would skew, um, especially at a street level, the way it looks, I think it may become noticeable. So, um, I don't have a problem with the 80% being looked at, at a larger lot size, but I'd be more concerned for the smaller. So if it's not too cumbersome to have a two-tiered, um, option, I think for, from a public perspective, I think that would be easier to digest.
That'd be an interesting discussion, yeah.
Okay.
That's a good point. Is, I don't know, is that something that everybody's okay talking about?
Yeah, I had.
I always had that in my mind from the very beginning.
I had written a note, is 90 enough? So I'm glad you brought that up, because I think that's good to look at.
You make a good point about how it fits. Okay, thanks.
Um, so, performance standards, we'll talk more, um, in the cluster provisions, so there's not really a whole lot to discuss there right now. Um, we're probably gonna be able to move quicker through some of these. Um, not that quick, unfortunately. Uh, non-conforming. Um, the interesting thing right now is that the subdivision does not, subdivision ordinance does not talk about how to deal with, um, sites that are non-conforming to density. So I do have one example, um, that I'd like to show you. Um, and we, we have proposals that, we have sites that are non-conforming to density, um, and we've, uh, we've had proponents come in and wanna do infill toolkit, like town homes, and to create fee simple lots, and it really raises an interesting question of, um, what does that do to the non-conforming status? And what does subdivision do to the non-conforming status? And it's, it's something that, believe it or not, is not really dealt with in a lot of municipalities, but some do have it, and we think it's important, um, to deal with. And it kinda goes somewhat to my philosophy of whether or not property lines should dictate land use. And sometimes it does, and I don't know that it's always important that it does, because the property line, unless there's a fence, is often hidden, and you don't even know where a property line does or doesn't exist. Here's a situation, um, that, um, just to kinda broaden it a little bit, you can see it's in an existing neighborhood, the lots are relatively large. The, the lots that is outlined, um, it's known to have two single-family homes on it. The compelling thing about this is in, it's in a 20,000 zone, and it only has 36,500 square feet. There's no way under the current rules that they would be able to subdivide this under the 90%, they wouldn't even be able to subdivide this. And then the question is, what are we doing to the non-conforming status? Because it's non-conforming to density currently. So the question that we would like to be able to explore, and we think it's, could have some good discussion, is, should this property be able to subdivide because of its non-conforming status and create substandard lots? So it's a question of whether or not this is worthy to explore.
Can I?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I agree with that. I'm just wondering if I could, we have 30 of these, and, I mean, a lot of these issues get so technical as we get into them. The, this has been one of the more, most well-vetted ordinance updates that I've seen as far as reaching out for comment with the public. Um, there's been subcommittee meetings on this. I'm just wondering if, as a commission, as a group of, some of these more complicated ones, we've talked pretty in-depth about, when we look at these more technical aspects, what we're supposed to do here tonight is say, should we be drafting ordinance on these issues? Is this germane to this ordinance update? I'm just wondering if there's a way that we could sort of move through these a little...
Make some more efficiency in this?
Yeah.
I can move through many, we're gonna go quicker now through some. Do you wanna go through a few, and then we'll see, and then we'll touch back in a little bit? Is that okay?
Well, let's, I mean, it's a good point, we don't wanna take forever, and some of us have had like...
Oh, but man, it's passion, I've got passion for this all day.
Yeah, but I guess, here's the deal, Garrett's, Garrett's probably feeling a little bit like I am, which is, we've already had this conversation with staff, like, three times because of the subcommittee, so maybe there's a way to, uh, I get where you're getting at, maybe there's a way to ask the other commissioners who haven't had that bite at the apple, if it's important to them on certain, maybe, I mean, maybe there's a more efficient way to go through it, because I, I do find us, you're right, and I'm guilty of it too tonight, we're kinda getting a little bit further into the weeds than we should, you know? Uh, I don't know, I mean, Jeff and Tom, you haven't had as much opportunity to review this, so I don't wanna like, take away from your chance, um, but you're right, I mean, if, if we get too into it, we'll, we'll be here too late. Thoughts?
Well, I guess my question was just if, if you are looking for any specific tweaks or different perspectives on this that will, you know, move us forward to writing code, then you do need to discuss it at some level, and, and this is actually a good example, you know? What I was gonna ask on this was, is this one of those situations towards neighborhood specific? Because this has been the underlying theme that we've heard for years from Birchwood. They don't want this. Other people might. So, I mean, if there's something that we need to discuss, when do we discuss it? Do we discuss it before you get to code writing, or do we discuss it, uh, later when you bring it back? So I'm just investing time where it makes the most sense.
I can give you, uh, some options on how you may wish to proceed. Um, clearly, um, we're open to your comment beyond this evening. Um, if in your review coming in tonight, you had some issues you wish to discuss, let's focus on those issues, um, and talk about it. Um, if you'd like to take some time between now and, let's say, a week from tonight, and there are any further ones in which to contact staff on it, we'll certainly note it. Um, but we, we're looking for, are we roughly right to start the code? And, um, you know, we could, each one, and Kathy has, has got great depth on every one of these issues, so I guess, in your review of this in preparation for the meeting, were there some that stood out that you would wanted to make sure we covered tonight?
Yeah, and, I mean, to use your example, I mean, I think what they're looking for is, is addressing non-conforming issues in subdivisions important or not, full stop. And then, when they draft an ordinance, if it doesn't have a provision for Birchwood, just as an example, maybe at that point, we say, hey, wait a minute, do we need to think about this specific neighborhood?
And I, and I know of two issues that, getting later into this, that staff does, does want to have... does want to have the conversation.
Now.
Because, yes, because there was the most discussion at the steering committees with those and, and wanting to know if, if we're on the right track or some things that we, we could look at. Many of them didn't have discussion and they were generally, yeah, we, we agree, we think it's a good thing, go forth. So I guess for those that weren't on the subcommittee, if you, you know, to, if you, if you support the, the three that at least led that march initially, then I think we're going to have some general consensus of, it's not how to do it, it's what should we look at? We haven't answered the question, how we're really trying to identify the what.
Well, as a non-committee member, I'd say that we actually already covered the ones I had marked up. So I didn't have big flags here through the rest of the documents. So I'm fine just going with the flow and you can cover the ones that you actually wanted to talk about.
Do you want to start with the planning commissioners' questions first or do you want me to ask the two that I think staff would like most direction on and then backtrack from there or?
Yeah, I'd like feedback because like I said, I've, I've kind of had a pretty good opportunity to adjust all this, so I don't want to make the call because I don't think it'd be fair. So...
Well, that, that's the reason why I brought it up because I thought a lot of these issues that really I have a lot of thoughts on were the first, you know, 10 that we've talked about. And so I'd like to hear the two that staff's requesting direction on.
Okay.
Okay, let's do that. And then again, but Jeff, please don't feel like we don't want to hear, if you do have others in this list that we didn't get to, Kathy doesn't get to, then we can talk about them.
I'm good.
Let's talk.
So, let's go to the top of page nine, preliminary plats and phasing. So currently, under the existing regulations, an applicant come in and can get approval for a preliminary plat. And what the preliminary plat, under state law, what it says, at least if they were to get it today, that they need to complete a phase of that development within five years in order to keep their preliminary plat, so their preliminary plat doesn't expire. So right there, the questions are, what is a phase? The subdivision ordinance doesn't define what a phase is. And then to go beyond that first phase, they have five years again to continue to keep that preliminary plat alive to do the next phase and then to do the next phase and to do the next phase. So there's a couple scenarios that staff is raising in this and a lot of it has to do with predictability, both, both from staff's perspective of trying to plan, but it's also for the public's perspective of trying to understand when things are going to come and, you know, for us, it's utility planning and park planning and street planning and, and there's just so much that goes on, it's so dynamic and it happens so fast. So staff believes that there should be provisions for phasing, more than what we have now. We don't know what those are. We haven't, we didn't really discuss with the steering committee and/or the planning commission what the answer is because it's really quite, it's really, it's a difficult topic because there, there are a lot of issues surrounding. So staff is not taking this topic lightly. We understand the implications of, of any discussion that we may have. This is actually an approved preliminary plat. I'm not trying to hide the innocence of anyone with this one. Basically what you can see here is there's seven phases identified. Each one has somewhere between 30, 40 lots. So the questions that come up, well, and if you do the math, 35 years here. Klein Road happens to be one of our tarials in our comp plan. When can we plan for that? If we go to phases? Well, we at least can get part of it within 20 years, the maximum time of 20 years, because that's at the end of year four. But we won't get it over here until the very end. So we, we look at these timing issues and we look at infrastructure needs and utilities go with that, sewer, water, and sometimes you need utilities for that next person down the line. That's the orderly extension of public infrastructure. The other one that we look at that even goes a bit further, and these are, won't be jeopardized by any regulations we have, these are all vested plats, so I don't feel that we're exposing these to anything, they're just simple examples. So here you'll see a phase one, a phase 1A, and then you'll see we go up to eight. This is a 1999 preliminary plat. So by the time we're getting through all this, we're, we're close to 50 years. 50 years feels like a long time. This was adopted prior to our current critical area ordinance. You can see through here that there, there are creeks and there's two, two corridors. There's very steep topography. So it's not to say or to take away anything that they already have today, that's not our point. Our point is to look into the future and to ask, is this really what, is this really good planning? What comes back to us is we need predictability. We, we, when, when we get money for lending, they need to know what we can do and that vesting gives us that predictability. I mean, these are real life, real hard decisions that we do understand, but at the same time, there seems to be some equity within this. So one of the examples I want to show you, and this one I've actually taken some street names off more so because it, I'm hoping it illustrates our, my point. The bold outline is, is, is the holdings and it's not entirely true, but to represent the discussion tonight, it's, it's the holdings of an individual or, or a corporation. And what, what this person developer chose to do is to come in and only plat a portion of this. So there's a preliminary plat approval for only what is within the dash line. But what we were also able to do within that plat and further negotiations with the property owner is to identify one of the very key elements that we need, and that's the extension of this road. So what we were able to do is we were able to look at the entire site, look at a specific development proposal within that, but then also start to ident, identify the infrastructure needs. And in this particular location, there's also some open space, this is part of our pro plan that we would like to be able to identify. So what it does potentially is if we, if we could frame some provisions maybe around this, is it gives some anticipation to the city. It gives some anticipation to the developer of, of what those needs are as they start to plat. But what it doesn't do is it doesn't vest, call it 130 acres to old standards. And the challenge of starting to say, well, a preliminary or a, a phase of plat has to have 20 lots, has to have 20 lots. What if the market can't absorb 20 lots? Then what have we just done? Well, then only needs to do five. Well, but then they're coming in all the time and so it's, it's, it's a very challenging, the solution will be very challenging and there'll be a lot of discussion, but we feel it's worthy of that analysis and I guess that's the question that we're putting to the planning commission this evening.
And I guess practically, we are assured each phase stands by itself if nothing subsequent ever came in. I mean, that's the way we work it. So we don't get ourselves hung where we anticipated the park to be built at the end, we needed it at the beginning, it never gets built. So everything is proportionate and you always say as if nothing else came through. However, we do need to have some logical criterion to look at how you design your phasing. And we want to make sure that the, the chunks that are made make sense in order to be able to fit into your overall scheme, rather than just look solely at, if I do 100 phases, I have 500 years worth of project. And that, that doesn't really serve anyone because by the time that last phase comes in, it may not be needed, things may have changed. So I guess the sense we'd have is our, we're, we're asking to be able to come up some basic phasing standards that describes how you break your project down and what we look for in terms of that.
Thoughts, Garrett?
Yeah, I, I mean, from what I hear, I hear kind of two different main issues that come up. One being, you know, from a city perspective, is you're looking at critical areas and you're looking at development patterns that aren't consistent with critical areas, current critical areas ordinances. From a landlord's side, they're looking at what they view as being invested right. So in that scenario, I, I would just think that with the phasing, as long as a landlord would have flexibility with the other code regulations that they have to adhere to, to get their entitled unit yield, then after some period of time and expiration of vested phasing right, new critical areas, ordinance would kick in as long as they don't lose unit yield that they've already been vested for. So that, that's one issue that I could see as needing to explore further. And then with the road and the circulation, because in those larger subdivisions, the landowners are building those, that infrastructure and then transferring that, that asset to the city for maintenance, how do you come up with identifying early on what might be a critical arterial that's going to need to be on a more predictable timeline for everyone to use for circulation? But it would have to be early on, so some capital facilities planning on the early stages of the plat development so that there's some predictability, like we're going to need this from you in 10 years and in agreement at the beginning. I just see that as saving a lot of problems with this.
Jeff?
I think I remember a recent rezone on the north end of town that was pretty big that kind of broke down over phasing, if I'm not mistaken. It was, the city and the developer couldn't come to an agreement on phasing commitments. And I'm just kind of curious if that, that's my recollection, I don't want to name it. But I'm just kind of curious how often there's an impasse right now without having things codified where you see commitments from a developer that they think the market won't support or they can't do and, and, you know, they take their cookies and walk home or some, whatever. Is phasing normally a contentious issue when you just negotiate or is, is this something that's generally agreeable by all parties and it's not, not a particular issue? And the development community wouldn't necessarily have a problem with codifying requirements? I, I just don't know what the environment is right now.
I don't think necessarily that there have been disagreements with phasing. I think if anything, staff has been very willing to work with the developers as they, as they bring phasing plans forward. Where we have identified a need for something specific, then we have said, in this phase, per this phasing plan, this shall be done. So it becomes a preliminary plat condition. And that has seemed to work. It's more of, most, every other land use application has a time limitation. This is one of the only few that literally can go on for half a century or more. And at what point is it too much? That's the question we're asking. The conclusion may come back, it's not too much, but it's, it's an anom, it's an anomaly the way that it's, it's done right now. And our regulations change so much, so fast, at least within every five to 10 years, there's something major happening. You just had an update to the critical area ordinance, we're doing the stormwater regs. I mean, when we start to look at these, there's changes and we want to be able to plan for that. And sometimes we have a difficult time planning for that because we don't know when things are happening or exactly where they're going to go because of what if somebody wants to change and, you know, how we deal with that. There's some out there that say you can't predict beyond 20 years because the market is so dynamic. Some say they want their single family lots from now until eternity until they decide when they're done. So there's different philosophies out there and each developer holds their, their own idealistic with, within, you know, their business practice. And it's just a question of, is that appropriate? Is it the right thing?
And to respond to your question, there was a concern about switching phases. The reason we had concern was a road segment wasn't going to be constructed. We ended up working through a development agreement which addressed all of the transportation so we can get it in some reasonable order. And that solved the issue, it was approved in these chambers. And in terms of the phasing, clearly there's risk involved. People invest a great deal of dollars, they should have vesting to rights. But the, the duration of some of those are beyond any reasonable plan for some of those way later phases for anyone to consider what the uses would be. And Kathy's saying, is there a reasonable sunset that honors the need for a proponent who's taken risk to have assurance, but something so far in the future, we should say it's past the line and might have to be revisited? Solution was you might have your yield, but you have to meet the new standard.
Lisa?
This is one of the ones that I really kind of reviewed more than twice because I personally think we do need to take a look at sunset, I mean, not drive, but as far as the phasing. Because the thought that something could go for 100 years, I mean, it's just realistically, things change like critical ordinance and I would want new needs to be considered 30, 40 years from now in some of our development areas. And so I, I do think spending some extra focus and time on this would be very prudent because of thought that this is one of the things that does have an open end. I think that's a gap that we need to close. How that looks, you guys are the experts at that, but it'll be interesting to see what you bring forward on it.
Sounds like this is a topic where there's general consensus that we want to see something.
Okay, the last one that staff would like to bring forward has to do with cluster subdivisions and that is, I'm just, I'm going to bring two together and one is on the bottom of page nine and the other's the top of page 10 and that is expanding the allowable uses. There's two proposals in this packet. One deals with the use of the infill toolkit in cluster designations within the city. And the also, the other is expanding commercial uses as well in certain, both of them in certain situations. One of the key that we feel and that's identified in here is that there needs to be transitions between existing neighborhoods and new neighborhoods. And the example that I use amongst staff when we discuss this is having a 20,000 square foot single family back up to eight, 12 townhomes, maybe, maybe not, maybe you need to have a 20 with a 20 and then within the, within the proposal, you can then look at your different housing types. And, and that's really what's meant on the recommendation on page 10 where it talks about lot size transition. I have an example here to show you, that's an existing situation in the city, not exactly what this is getting at, but in part, it, it kind of is. And it's actually, it's, it's, it's a model that it's really unfortunate, it can't be used in more places, but way back when this was done is when we used to be able to, in old PDRs, which is, it was a planned residential development way before we, we did our plan now. And essentially what it did is it, it's on Burt Street and it's Alabama's up at the top of your page. You come through an existing single family neighborhood and then the, the proposal actually consisted of everything within there. Well, what you can see is that these are existing platted properties. And what they did is they did the exact thing of lot transitioning is they put very similar size, single family adjacent to the single family. And what you have inside, in this particular case, is multifamily. You have some three-story walk-ups, you've got some smaller multifamily, you've got a community center, you've got a pool. I mean, it is a full-on mixed neighborhood. So the idea is if you were to substitute these potentially with not multifamily, because we're in single, by the way, this is in a single family zone, but in our, in our, in, for what we're discussing here, if we could put infill toolkit uses here. And then in the right locations, potentially if we start to look at Samish or we start to look at Wacom Falls or we start to look at King Mountain where we have very... to look at Wacom Falls or we start to look at King Mountain where we have very large land holdings, do neighborhood centers make sense? I mean, should we start looking at that intermixed when people have large land holdings? Because when you start looking at our vast multifamily and/or single family zoning, they're not within walking distance of little neighborhood services. And so is that appropriate? So these are the type of questions that we would like to expand. Currently, infill toolkit is not permitted in single family zones. Staff brought it forward to the steering committee in, in single family cluster attached zones. The subcommittee said, why attached, only let's look at all the cluster. So what we intend to do is to come back with an inventory, if you will, of the cluster areas that are left within the city that are undeveloped or have an opportunity to utilize this to maybe start identifying some thresholds. You know, is it, is an acre enough? Probably not, because you won't be able to transition. At what point, you know, can you get into this and start looking at these alternative uses? So we, we would like that opportunity to bring that forward.
I think, I think it's a great idea.
Anybody else? Lisa?
For greenfield development, providing it has that transitional between an existing single family, I found it very interesting and it'd be great to see some examples of what that would look like utilizing the infill toolkit along with that, that component of having that, I'll call it like a mini urban village where you have a restaurant and some services clustered within that so that you don't have those food deserts. But again, for the greenfield type of development, I found that concept a bit fascinating and I'd love to see some examples of what that'd look like.
Rick?
Yeah, our experience with this is you have to have a fairly large minimum lot size to be able to make that transition. And you have to match all the edges that are developed or potentially developed to match the zoning transition. So largely you get to bigger sites and they're, they're virtually all greenfield. That being said, wonderful opportunity to provide a diversity of housing choice, do it from the get-go as a part of the design, integrate greater amenities that wouldn't be possible in single family by itself without some choice.
Tom?
You know, I, I can remember all the flack that city council got when the infill toolkit was brought forth and they stepped back and said, we're not going to implement it in single family zones, period. I hope that if we're talking about this kind of thing again, that we have some kind of parameters and, and that council will have the courage to, to back us up.
Thanks. So I think generally, we're interested in hearing more about this. And Lisa, you're right, I think, you know, at the beginning you said some of these are like things that'll work in the neighborhoods for infill and some of them will work in the greenfield. This is a good example of where, like what you said, Rick, there's a lot of pros in those certain environments, maybe not in the middle of an existing developed neighborhood. Yeah.
So I guess somewhat to close, I don't know if you're going to take public comment, but at least from staff's perspective, there's a lot of process changes in here. And generally, both committees felt that the, the processes were helping streamline, they were identifying known glitches in our system and providing adequate fixes for those. And so we, staff feels very comfortable in, in moving forward with making those changes. It's not substantive, it's really internally how we work with the applicant to streamline our process. So that's what the intent of those changes are.
Yeah, thank you. I think, pardon me, I'm glad you made the suggestion, Garrett, because Kathy, you're right. I just went through the list of the remaining items. Almost all of them are procedural relative to our different processes. And I recollect from our subcommittee, we actually had people from some of the steering committees sit, you know, not in the one we went to, but the prior one. And a lot of this came from the people who are in, like in the grind, day-to-day, you know, this, we could make this better for all parties. And so Kathy, I think you're absolutely right. Most of this stuff that we haven't talked about is just kind of making this process better for both sides of the table, more efficient, more clear, adding transparency. And so I think that'll, I think you're, it's fair for you to say what you just said, you know, from what, from the experience I took from the subcommittee meetings.
And we're going to make some processes better that people already thought were good. So I mean, we're even, you know, we're, we're going above and beyond.
So let's, let's take public comment if there's anybody. But before we do that, and thank you Kathy, I want to ask a question about next steps with this because it speaks to kind of, I think, you know, like what you were talking about with Jeff about opportunity to comment more. Is this, is this coming, now we've kind of given you, you know, we've had this opportunity to say, yes, go forth and draft. Are we talking first quarter 2017? Are we talking December? You know, what, what are we thinking generally for this?
I, sooner than later, but I would really like to have an opportunity to sit down with Rick and other staff to really put a strong timeline together. That is one of the things that we did skip over, we're Title 13, and I know that it's Public Works intention to come forward in the first part of 2017 with proposed revisions. And somewhat why that's critical to what we, what is being proposed in the subdivision update is we, we would like to draft this ordinance that is absent of any street standards, absent of any stormwater requirements, absent of any other requirements that live in other titles. But we also know that those other titles right now need to be updated. And so what, what we've contemplated, if Title 13 can't keep up with us, that we could potentially adopt kind of interim standards that Public Works would support. And then when Title 13 was adopted, we would essentially remove them from 18 and then reference 13. It's kind of messy. And so we're sort of hoping we can kind of come together and they are integral in, in a lot of ways of, you know, how do we do that planning and how do we, you know, what street improvements are we going to get with short plats versus plats and, you know, all those kinds of things. So there, maybe there's a little more communication and timing necessary, but I think it's something that we definitely need to iron out.
Thank you. And I'm assuming we'll have multiple meetings to get through all this because it's going to be pretty technical. Okay, good.
So my concept so far, and maybe this is a good time, is that hopefully go through process first, because I think process is going to be the easiest. And with process comes a form of information. It, it kind of will help you and the public understand what, what these short plat subdivision, lot line adjustment, binding site plans go through. So then you can understand where then in the process, we look at lot design standards and how are they put into the process? Meaning when we, when we review design or decision criteria, where, where do the lot design standards fall into it? So I think it's an appropriate place to start with process and I think it'll be the quickest. And then we can dive into the specifics of what, you know, what is the landscape going to look like? And I think that's really where most of the discussion will occur. So if that makes sense, that's the approach that we were at least anticipating coming forward.
Sounds good. Okay, well, thank you. So is anyone who'd like to comment? Linda? Come on down.
Do you want anything? Okay.
We appreciate all the flexibility you guys are trying to build into this. There is a concern with discretionary action by staff, that's always a balancing point to keep in mind. But on the phasing thing that we were discussing on page nine, the suggestion was made to be that we cut the phasing to a limit of something like 20, 25 years and then go to a development agreement. Does that make sense to anyone? This was what Bill said to me as he walked out the door, and I may have to find out in more detail what it is his intent was. I just wondered if that rings any bells.
If I may respond.
Yes, definitely, yeah.
We'll pick that up later. Okay. Then the other question I had, oh, I'm sorry.
Well, Rick was going to answer your question, yeah.
What, what I believe he meant, a development agreement could assure the standards that will be used for review past a point in time and its binding with land. So what is likely is a fixed approval and then some agreement on how you proceed past that.
Which would make sense, a two-part, you know, divided up. My other question was this, we have at least one builder, we have several, who are really interested in what they call cohousing, like the Bellingham Cohousing project that's on the south side in Happy Valley and so forth. And they have repeatedly told us they have request after request after request to do more of that kind of stuff. But the problem is the current rules state that to do that in Bellingham, you have to have the potential owners bought in. It's like you've got to condominiumize and that that's next to impossible. That people come to them and say, if you can do a cohousing project, we'd love to buy into it. But the difficulty is getting everybody to cooperate and create their, whatever it is, their little association or whatever. And the suggestion was made that maybe the subdivision ordinance would be a place to address this. Am I, does that sound correct?
Well, typically cohousing projects are not subdivided typically. They are, and that has been an issue because they have wanted to because of, for financing and the condominiumizing is not the preferred, the preferred method of, I guess, land division. I'm not, so given what we have at least proposed, it will provide the opportunity for cohousing to have more flexibility when considering subdivision. But under the definition right now of cohousing and an applicant, it requires this assortment of people because cohousing is not a development that is done by a developer and then people buy into. Cohousing is a very unique type of housing form that it is actually designed by the, the cohousing group, the cohort, and they come together to design and define what this development will be. So it was very intentional not to allow it to be a developer-driven process.
And what we're hearing from the public is that they would like that reversed, that they would like to be able to come in and buy into a project like this that is a developer-driven project. So I'm asking that we consider that possibility because apparently it's, you know, it's another housing form, but it's, it, the, the big issue with doing this is difficulties in, in that social process, I will call it. So the request was to please consider whether we can, we can switch that and, and make that very basic change in how we approach it.
Thanks, Linda. In my mind, I almost think that'd be like just doing a normal subdivision, right? You just, the developer splits up the lots and he sells them to people who are interested.
Yeah.
I'm a little confused.
Well, no, that's where I, yes, I, I'm agreeing with you. And the cohousing is, is very unique in, in its lifestyle. And one of the things that it has, which is not typical of most subdivisions, is a common house. I mean, that's really what, that, that, that's the soul behind the cohousing project. And there's nothing in the subdivision ordinance right now that would prohibit that from being constructed. It's just, I, I think that there's, there's more discussion with staff potentially that would, that maybe could, could bridge or break, bridge some of those barriers of conversation that are occurring.
All right, Garrett, did you say?
But yes, Linda, point very well taken and it's something that we would like to discuss further.
Garrett, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to tell Kathy, I see your work throughout this document and this is, in my opinion, one of the better ordinance updates that, that I've seen. And the motivation on updates on ordinances sometimes is GMA requirements or different timelines, I really get the sense that this is to try to make it better. And I really just want to say thanks and keep working hard on it.
Thanks, Garrett. Anybody else tonight? All right, well, thank you, Rick and Kathy. And we're, I know we're going to look forward to seeing the details, so good luck putting all that together for us. And I think with that, we'll close the work session. And so there's just a few minor things to take care of at this point. There's really no particular business, old or new, to talk about. So just our, our next schedule, unless, Rick, do you have any comments you'd like to make about anything in particular? Any, anything coming up that we need to know about or anything? Nothing's?
As you know, we did have a lively public hearing on Monday. The council will be considering this coming Monday and council committee of the whole in the afternoon, the public comment received to date. And we'll be looking for a direction for any revisions, additional revisions that need to move forward. So we're likely barring some unique issue that has been raised that has not been addressed and we, we didn't really hear any of staff, looking for adoption perhaps in November.
For the comp plan.
For the comp plan.
That's exciting.
Right. We will be coming back to probably present to you at a future meeting, talking about annexation and annexation phasing.
Okay, great. And then our November 10th meeting, which is our next meeting, will be the ordinance for low impact development. Great. All right, well, thank you, everybody. With that, we'll adjourn.